This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 54953, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950. Series Resolution Number 2022-123 and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of the emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Welcome everybody to today's city council meeting, Monday, the 24th. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Here.
District two vacant, District four, Councilmember Klein.
Here.
District three, Vice Mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and also Pastor Jim. Jim, I heard that you are online.
I'm here. All right, let's pray. God, thanks for the cooler weather and for fall sports and holiday seasons coming up. We give you great thanks for our city, for its elected leaders and paid staff, for firefighters and law enforcement, for businesses and schools, for our neighbors, even if we sometimes disagree. Pray for this council tonight to be quick to listen and bold to act for our city's prosperity. Keep us safe, keep us together, keep us grateful. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Today, we have two presentations, and the Veterans Day proclamation will be presented by Casey. Councilmember Casey.
Proclamation honoring November the 11th, 2022 as Veterans Day. Whereas Veterans Day originated as Armistice Day on November the 11th, 1919, the first anniversary marking the end of World War I. And whereas there are approximately 18 million military veterans in the United States, and whereas the citizens of Series owe a debt of gratitude to those who have served in defense of this great nation. And whereas throughout generations, veterans have preserved our nation's ideas, have liberty and democracy. And whereas not just on Veterans Day, but every day, the community of Series honors their service, dedication and valor, and are forever grateful for their service. And whereas we get to enjoy the freedoms we have and live in this great country because of the veterans and their sacrifices. And whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. Therefore, on behalf of the Mayor Javier Lopez, fellow councilmembers Brett Silvera and Mike Klein, we do hereby honor November the 11th as Veterans Day in the City of Series.
And accepting the proclamation as Veterans Foreign Affairs at American Legion Halls, Jack, Bob, Dave and Steve, if you could please stand, I have these proclamation copies for you. Big round of applause. And now for the second proclamation. Captain Crane will be accepting this proclamation on Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week. Declaring the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas California State legislators passed a resolution on September 7th, 2018, designating the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. And whereas the health, safety and the welfare throughout the city is highly relied upon code enforcement officers. And whereas code enforcement officers have a huge impact on a community by improving the quality of life residents within the city by addressing issues related to every aspect of the city government, such as animal control, illegal dumping, environmental health, building, and so much more. And whereas the challenge and the demand of the code enforcement officer has significantly evolved and increased throughout the years. And whereas code enforcement officers regularly interact with citizens of the community in which they serve and play a large role in improving aesthetics of the city. And whereas the City of Series recognizes, honors and acknowledges code enforcement officers that serve this community. Now therefore, I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, councilmembers James Casey and Mike Klein do hereby declare the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Series. Round of applause. Thank you very much. Moving on to citizen communications. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in the City Council meetings, adopter rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution Number 2007-106, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matters which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must adhere to the rules of decorum. Rules of decorum are posted outside the chambers doors. We will begin with in-person comments. We do have one card. Mr. Osgood. Not for public comment, okay. Anybody else in the audience? Mr. Warren, please step up.
Good evening, Council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak this evening. What I have to ask the Council to consider is that the city is not flying the POW MIA flag. And for what reason, I don't know. Maybe it's something that hasn't been brought to the city's attention. Or if they did in the past, I'm not aware of that fact. Today, there are approximately 83,000 unaccounted-for service members from our armed forces and over 1,500 from the Vietnam War era in itself. Several years ago in 2001, the National League policy on POW MIA flag display was resolved. But the National League of POW MIA families strongly recommends that the state and municipal entities fly this flag daily to demonstrate continuing commitment to the goal of the fullest possible accounting of all personnel not yet returned to American soil. On November the 7th, 2019, then-President Donald Trump signed Public Law 116-67 into existence. And it basically says that every day that the American flag flies, the POW MIA flag should be flown as well. Most states have adopted similar laws as have local governments nationwide. And I would request that the City of Series and the Council take this into consideration and make this happen for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Klein. You have pushed your button.
You know, Mayor and Council and Mr. Warren, you know, I was gonna say something at the end of the meeting when it was time for councilmembers' input. I'd read your email, so I'd like to see if we can get staff to look at getting the POW MIA flags flown at the Community Center, City Hall, American Legion Hall. You know, we are honoring our veterans and our servicemen now with our flags that are being flown, that are putting together right now of our local servicemen. And I think we are really doing a little unjust by not complying and flying the POW MIA, you know, since we're doing our current service members. So I'd like to see if we can get staff to look into at least City Hall, Community Center and American Legion Hall.
I would love that. Councilmembers? Sounds good. Alex, if that's.
Thank you.
Look into that when you get an opportunity and.
Sure, just to clarify, my, Mr. Mayor. The flag is being flown at Whitmore Park at the Memorial, but we actually do have additional flags currently on order.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you.
Awesome. Appreciate that. Thank you. Just follow with the email if there's gonna be any new locations. That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make a comment? Anybody on Zoom?
There's no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, I know that there is an email that needs to be read into the record.
Correct, Mr. Mayor. We received an email from Alvaro Franco stating, Dear Mayor and City Council, Series has a problem gathering citizen input. On September 23rd and September 27th, 2022, the city published two surveys on its website under the latest news and events section. The surveys asked for citizen input to help plan for the design of Phase Two at Ochoa Park and improve bike and walking access to downtown Smyrna Park and River Bluff. The city also held public meetings at Ochoa Park on October 8th and October 12th. Moreover, on October 4th, the Series Courier published an article with the same information. On paper, it seems the city does more than enough to gather sufficient input to justify decision-making. However, on October 10th, 2022, during the City Council meeting, the city engineer reported that 115 people had participated. By satellite imagery, there are more than 115 households within the East Gate community alone. If we attribute two people per household, then the survey failed to reach 50% of the targeted community. Citywide, the participants account for only 0.23% of the population. In this case, if no more significant input was submitted, then less than 1% of the population would influence how $2.5 million worth of city funds gets used. That doesn't seem right. With such low turnouts, maybe it is not citizens who are the problem, but rather the outreach used to gather input. To solve this problem in this Amazon economy where people want everything delivered to and from their fingertips, the city should invest in a mass texting service that reaches everyone with Series listed on their driver's license or identification card. There should be an option to opt into the service as well as opt out. Attached to this correspondence is a sample text message sent by my former city. I would like the city clerk or city attorney to read it out loud so that the council can appreciate how much citizen input was submitted and more importantly, the level of transparency within the results. I know my wife is Stefania, and I wouldn't mind answering a yes or no question prior to every city council meeting to help better guide the council in decision-making, which may ultimately affect us and our three-month-old daughter. I would go as far as consider this an emergency matter given that we have been without councilmember representation for such a long time. Please consider a motion to begin conversations about investing in such mass texting service. Kind regards, Alvaro Franco, City of Series. P.S. Can someone tell me whether I can bring my kayak on opening day of lower terrace of River Bluff on November 4th? I'd like to note that attached to the email is what appears to be a sample text message regarding a poll. And this attachment has been included as part of the record and is also attached to the emails that you each received at the dais.
I see that. Mr. Klein, you do have your button pushed before you speak. I just wanted to mention that conversation that I talked to Alex about a while back about a possibility of an app that coincides with our website that we can probably look into in the future. It could probably work for this type of situation where we can reach out to the public. It's more of a comment than an actual question, Alex. I know that it's one of those things where you'd have to look into, but there is an app that we want to roll out in the future. It could probably work, something similar to this.
Well, and my comment is another one of these that I printed out to discuss that, you know, an app is great, just like the app that we have to report illegal dumps and different things during the city. But that's an app you have to download. You know, I'd like to see if we can get IT, the IT staff to look into the text message where they can send a text message to the citizens of Series that either want to be interested in it or that we can do. They can either opt out and there's a link that they can get into. I know that, you know, I get text messages from links from, you know, different areas of business. And I can either delete it or take the survey. So, you know, I think if we text message, we could get a little better response than having to download an app and get it on it. So I'd like to see if staff and IT can look into that and see what the cost is and what the parameters are to set it up.
Don't see that being a bad idea. I know that, not saying that it would work for the City of Series, but Square App does offer something.
You know, I know that Councilmember Vice Mayor Silvera has worked diligently on Ochoa Park. You know, I know that city staff has been working on that along with the input. And Vice Mayor Silvera, you know, we got Smyrna Park, but there's also a lot of other people that, you know, missed the boat because they don't have or they don't have the access to some of the other things. And social media is the way things are going. So I think, you know, to look into it, we could be beneficial for it.
I see it's worth the look.
Yeah, I've already spoken with the city clerk and city manager regarding this, and they're doing research on these text message systems that are out there right now. So thank you. I agree that it could be hugely beneficial to our city.
And unless there's no other emails or phone calls? Okay, citizen communication is now closed. Is there anybody on the council that has a declaration of conflict? Moving on, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like a consent item pulled for further discussion?
I would like five and 11.
And according to this card, Mr. Osgood would like to pull item number nine. Is there anybody else who would like to pull any other items on the agenda? 13 is actually. Public hearing. See and none.
Move to approve 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 10 and 12.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Item number five, general correspondence information only, Public Works Month Report for September 2022. Mr. Klein?
Hey, you know, I pulled this item for one general reason. You know, not to take anybody's thunder, and I don't know if things would be said later on. But, you know, I'm reading the staff reports that in general is for our information only. But you got something in here and people that see what's on our agenda normally don't go in and see what everything is about. So I'd like to give a little shout out to our Public Works and things because, you know, under solid waste and recycling, there's a part in here. It says, "City staff collected 13 illegal dump sites in the city in non-right-of-way locations." There were 11 garbage can storage violations noticed in September. So these are violations that have already been done. But here's the thing that I really want to take effect is a free community disposal day for the City of Series customers is scheduled for the Saturday, February 4th at River Bluff Regional Soccer Complex parking lot from 8:00 a.m. to 12:45 p.m. Series residential garbage customers will be able to dispose of large items such as furniture and appliances, e-waste, waste tires up to nine, and old mattresses. This event is being funded through a Department of Transportation Clean California grant. The city recently received a local assistance grant for SB 1383 program implementation requirements, SB 1383 procurement requirements mandated that the city purchases and distributes 3,915 tons of compost annually. Without going any further, what it is, is Public Works worked with Caltrans, got this grant, and it's gonna have a, not basically, it's gonna have a free dump day. So now the thing is, is to reach out to the citizens to let them know that they can dispose of furniture and tires and everything else. But it's a step in the right direction, and I wanted to give a shout out to Public Works and city staff for making this happen. You know, for the last year or so, we have been fighting about with illegal dumps. We've been fighting with trying to get things cleaned up. And I just want to commend staff for, you know, we're trying to move in the right direction. So all I wanted to do is make that comment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Osgood, or do you want to?
Anybody from the public?
Anybody from the public have another comment or question in regards to item number five? Go ahead.
Genically serious. And Mike Klein comes over with some good questions. But living here a long time, reaching out to these people is another avenue, a hard one. We all know that. So Mike or Public Works, how are you gonna reach these folks? Because it's not as bad as it used to be. But there's still people, even on Central by those low-income apartments. You go by there this week, last week, there's still trash in between. There's two streets that run along the right side of the road. And, you know, I know we're allocated for so much money from Bertolotti to pick up these extra loads. But how are we gonna reach the people? That's the main thing. Some people are compliant, some people, well, I don't want to get in my truck. I don't want to move. I'll just throw it in the street like I did before, my neighbors did. So we've done a lot of improvement through the last few years, but we're still not reaching a particular group. And those people are probably gonna not listen to the city at all as far as a free dump. All right, thank you.
You know, Mr. Yeagley, you were correct. But I wanted to make this a note and be known because the city now, we have three months, November, December, January, to reach out to the public. And, you know, there's discussion here, what we've talked about as a text message app, things like that. So, you know, that's some of the stuff we're gonna work on in the direction. But I wanted to be known, you know, I've been inundated with nothing but illegal dumps in my email. And I wanted, you know, to at least reach out and let people know that the staff is trying to do things.
No, I'm not saying they're not.
Yeah. So I think, you know, we're going in the right direction.
I just think that what we've done so far, we've gained some ground, but we need to find some new thoughts to gain these other people to want to dump stuff, you know? And again, people don't want to, maybe too far, I don't want to use my car or whatever issue that is. So unless we park the dumpster in front of their house, those individuals that continuously do it, they probably won't adhere to this thing. But it's a good thing. I'm glad we haven't had anything like that for years. So that's a good thing. Thank you.
Can we get him? Do you have additional comment for item number five? Yeah, go ahead. Please state your name, sir.
John Osgood.
Are you?
The February dump event, that's great. In years past, we had to show our utility bill or statement to utilize that service. I would suggest the city just go off an identification card. Some of these people rent their homes. They don't see that water bill or garbage bill that goes to the landlord. So as we prepare for that event, maybe we could have staff accept the driver's license or ID card for that event. That's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John Warren, City of Series. Three months, three utility bills. There should be a flyer in each of the next three months utility bills. I know a lot of people don't read them, but you may reach out and touch somebody that will utilize that. And if there's grant money available, hopefully some of that money can be used to pay for these flyers. And I would suggest that if somebody shows up in February and wants to dump their couch, don't ask them for their driver's license, just take the damp couch, put it in your dumpster and get the next car through there. It's not necessary to ask for ID. Most of these people, if you turn them away, you're gonna find it in the orchard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna go really quick. My name's Rosalinda Viera. Just kind of briefly, because I know Parks and Recs have been doing really good with putting on some reels and stuff on Facebook and Instagram, and they've been coming up on my feed. I'm hoping maybe this is another way of being able to do that because it is gathering attention. I see shares and stuff. And so maybe that's another way of attracting people online with the new instant media, trying to get things to our door without having to leave our couch. We're gonna leave our couch there. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Anybody on Zoom? I see one more comment. Please state your name.
Linda Catchell, and I'm a citizen of Series, born here and raised. I'm willing to volunteer, and I'm sure there's many of my dog park friends who are willing to do their dog walking duties and also in these areas where people don't get their own utility bills to do a walk because I've done political walks door-to-door. There's a bunch of us, I'm sure we would be able, and we could help spread the word in those critical areas that seem to get dumped on where people don't know where they can go and get their stuff disposed of. So I'm willing to be an advocate, help get you, help get the word out because city employees can only do so much. Text messages are gonna be great, awesome idea, but sometimes door-to-door is the only way to do it.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay. Bring it back to council for motion.
I move to adopt number five, general correspondence information only, a Public Works monthly report in September 2022.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Mr. Osgood for Resolution Number 2022-137, authorizing the city to continue teleconference public meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, allowing the city to continue a hybrid virtual meeting environment.
I was good. I guess my question's for the city attorney. Last time this came before us, I remember the issue being if we don't do this and the council members needed to take that time at home for safety reasons because of coronavirus, they would have to notice that they were having that at home?
Is the question again, Mr. Osgood?
So if we don't continue this and a council member needed to, because of reasons of COVID or illness, have that meeting on Zoom at home while the other members were present here, they would have to notice the city in the agenda or vice versa, that they, their home address?
Yes, they would have to go back to the original way of doing this versus the way we're doing it now.
Right.
So that's correct, yes.
Could we, could we not do this resolution, get back to normal and continue the Zoom meetings? I wasn't clear if, how that would work.
I don't believe that it is possible.
Mayor, so the way that AB 361 works is it applies the rules to elected and appointed officials. In response to Mr. Osgood's inquiry, it's not required. In response to Mr. Osgood's inquiry, it's not required, this this resolution is not required in order to hold a Zoom environment meeting. So that can happen irrespective of this ordinance, this resolution, this resolution only applies for the rules that you and, for example, the planning commission have to follow if you decide to remote into a meeting.
Correct, correct. So you understand what she's saying as far as virtual?
Yes, absolutely. So with that being said, I would suggest that we go back to regular meetings, not continue this emergency ordinance, and keep the Zoom available to our citizens. So as we're coming out of this pandemic, CDC is changing their recommendations and guidance, the state's changing its recommendation and guidance. And I think it's time that we get back to normal and keep the Zoom component or other people that can't make it to the meeting or feel that that's not safe for them to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Clarification, because I know I pulled this up for clarification. If I remember correctly, if we decide to go back to way Mr. Osgood is is proposing, that if a council member or a person on Measure H cannot attend a meeting, but he wants to, he wants to be attended by Zoom, because we are not in compliance with the way this ordinance is, where his location is needs to be published. So it's public record that he is in his, he is remotely accessing from home or Yellowstone National Park or whatever. But with keeping this, we don't have to publish where I'm at.
Understand that. That's the way I understand it as well.
That that is correct. So the the traditional rule for teleconferencing requires that a missing or absent council member, for an example, would have to disclose their location on an agenda. It would have to be included on an agenda. You'd have to open up that location for public comments. It would be like holding a mini meeting wherever you are. That's the old rule. This exception that's been allowed temporarily, because this law expires in 2024, allows for a council member, committee member, commission member to not have to do that. So they can appear via Zoom without having to disclose their location or open up their location for a meeting. However, a couple of items for the council and the public's information. The governor has announced that as of February 2023, the state of California will deem the pandemic, the COVID pandemic, over. So COVID will no longer be a basis to carry out this set of rule, meaning 361, moving forward. That's one. Two, the legislature just passed a law and the governor signed into law exceptions to the old rule that essentially give elected officials two freebies, for lack of a better term, in order to be able to participate remotely. And we will be providing informational update on that as we get closer to to that date. But there there is a lot of flux right now as it relates to the Brown Act and meeting requirements. I think with the idea of allowing easier access via technologically advanced methods.
But that's to come in the future.
Yes.
It could be after the first of the year.
It is after January.
So if we if we decide not to do this, and this is the way I understood it the last time, if one of us can't be here and we don't have it posted 24 hours in advance or 48 hours in advance, 72 hours in advance, where our location is, then we cannot participate.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Bring us back to counsel for motion.
I want one comment. Because of the limited limited council members that we currently have, okay? That if one of us aren't here and we decide to to rescind this ordinance, it has to be a majority vote of three oh, no matter what. So I think that we need to take this and we need to accept this. And after the first of the year, with what the governor is proposing and things like that, then we can change the ordinance. We can get away from this. I think it's only beneficial for city staff with the work they put in for the reports and the and the current city council members. So I I support continuing it. That's why a couple of weeks ago with our last meeting, I pulled this item and and the city attorney explained to it, and I think it's beneficial for us to continue it. So with that being said, if there's no other comments, I move I move to adopt resolution 2022-137.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Moving on to item number 11, motion accepting 202021 Measure H financial report for the period ending June 30th, 2021. Mike?
Well, and I apologize to staff, but I had to ask these questions out loud. I have things written out because I just, you know, I I really tried to do a good job by informing staff of my things. But go to page 11, if you would please, in the staff report. Uh, it's a summary of ma- major major H funds. And I'm looking at this thing, and then I go to, uh, I put it as number two contractual services. Okay, I show contractual services at for the current fiscal year at 594-725, but you have it down at 278-903. I went back to the previous pages. Uh, page one for contractual service and page two for fires one, and that's where I got my numbers. Then I go to, for me, I put it down as three materials and supplies. You have down at 60483, but I come up with 52,157. And because I look back on the previous pages, and then I look at, um, operating transfers out is down at 152, but I come up with three, 388,882. So I guess my question is, everything comes out correctly as far as what your figures are on the bottom? But where it's put in here on top, it doesn't doesn't jive with what's in the staff report. I mean, I can show you my notes how I have them here, but it's like, okay. So staff reports says police salaries, benefits, contract services, material supplies, and same with fire, but then when you go back to your recap on page 11, those numbers don't match up.
I'm looking the the finance director for a response.
So you're comparing the staff report.
Yeah, the staff report right at the beginning.
Hmm.
I'm looking at that, and then I pull up on page 11, and none of those actual numbers, the way it's posted here, jive with what's in the staff report.
I'm I'm not quite cer- sure right now. I could research this a little bit.
May I?
Hey, Mike, before you go too far into that, I just talked to legal counsel. I think it'd be, we'd behoove us to table this part of the calendar until the next meeting, so you guys can get together and work it out, and then we can address it again at the next meeting. Does that make sense? And we can do that? Nivea?
Yes, you can table that.
Okay.
And yeah, that would be my recommendation recommendation. If we're looking at at the number this closely, we can pull the item. Um, I don't think there's any urgency in in this being considered this evening and bring it back um, after we have the opportunity to clarify these numbers with Mr. Klein.
I suggest we pull number 11 from the consent calendar until the next meeting.
Is Mayor? We're all cool with it. We're good.
Okay, that's fine.
Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much.
But the motion to table it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct. Moving on, there is no unfinished business. Moving on to public hearing, item number 13, ordinance number 2022-1073, in accordance with the city council of the City of Series amending Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare of the Series Municipal Code to add Chapter 22, adopting a military equipment use policy. The attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is an ordinance that will modify the municipal code in order to implement a requirement that has been imposed by the state uh, concerning the military equipment use policy for the City of Series moving forward. So late last year, the governor did sign AB 481 into law that requires local jurisdictions that have local law enforcement um, to regulate the military use of military equipment pursuant to very strict requirements within the government code. And so what is required now is the preparation of a policy on how to acquire and use and purchase military equipment at the local level. And that must be done through an ordinance and an annual review process. The annual review process is really to comply with the policy that will have been established by the council from the beginning on all the categories that I mentioned, and to provide members of the public an opportunity to weigh in on the topic about the use of military equipment. So the requirements for this particular ordinance are a little bit different than your standard ordinance process. A police department was required to produce the policy upfront, post it on the website uh, for public observation and comment, and that has that has occurred. Um, the item has been noticed as a public hearing in order to provide the members of the public an opportunity to weigh in on the policy and the ordinance. The policy that's been included um, as part of the packet, um, has been prepared by uh, the police department, and Captain Crane can speak to the specifics of the equipment. Um, the rationale for the use of the equipment, there's other criteria that we have to include, such as the fiscal impact, uh, procedural rules associated with the use of the equipment, training, compliance mechanisms, and a process by which the public can register complaints or submit questions about the equipment. And all of that is included in the policy that's been included as part of the agenda packet. So once the council conducts a public hearing tonight, we can bring it back for consideration and adoption at the following meeting. And therefore, after that, the city will use this policy into the future, and there will be an annual review um, in order to make sure that the city, um, police department is following the internal policy for use and and procurement. And again, to provide the public an update on the supply of military equipment within the police department. But with that, I can answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions, counsel? No questions. Uh, the public hearing is now open. I will, I believe Mr. Osgood had a question for this item. Osgood?
Not necessarily a question, Mr. Mayor. Few statements, Black's Law Dictionary, first edition here. Want to read to you the definition of arms, the legal definition. Anything that man wears for his defense or takes in his hand or uses in his anger, to cast at or strike at another. This term, as it is used in the Constitution relative to the right of the citizen to bear arms, refers to the arms of militiamen or soldier. And the word is used in its military sense. The arms of the infantry soldier are the musket and bayonet of the cavalry and the dragoons, the saber, holster pistols, and carbine of the artillery, the field piece, siege gun, and mortar with sidearms. The term in this connection cannot be made to cover such weapons as dirks, daggers, slung shots, sword, cane, brass knuckles, and Bowie knife. These are not military arms. If we as a city are going to have a military equipment use policy, we must understand that those are arms. If we codify as a corporation, as a city government, what items will be allowed by our police department to form a standing army? Standing army against the people with or without due process in the future. Those items are armaments, and the people have the right to keep and bear those same arms. This is the legal definition of arms. We must be very careful what we allow in that municipal code. Because we open up a door for a legal argument or possession of items that the state and the city don't want any citizen to have necessarily. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Is there any other comments from the public? Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, John Warren, City of Series. I think it's a good thing that our city police officers and the police force can utilize resources that we might not have here locally to obtain, um, military equipment for us to use. But I think the ordinance should list all military equipment that the city would have in its possession and in using. And when I briefly read through the staff report, it clearly indicated that the caliber of firearms or weapons was 50 caliber or greater. And I do believe the City of Series has smaller caliber weapons than that. So we should not be excluding some weapons or items and including others. I don't know quite what the restrictions were or the guidance or what the governor's law reads exactly. But I think if we're going to do this, we need to list everything that our city has that we receive from the United States government in that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any additional comments? Anyone on Zoom?
No hands on Zoom.
Mr. Klein, I see your button has been pushed.
You know, the staff report says, excuse me, that it's items identified as a military equipment, which is by AB 481. With listening to Mr. Osgood and and Mr. Warren, you know, it does lift what the policy does include in the staff report, uh, but it doesn't list everything that's AB 481. Okay, but I also think that, you know, um, you know, using common sense, that our police department is not going to, you know, go out and purchase uh, a lot of equipment that's unnecessary. So I think in the future, you know, we can probably get a list of what what's on AB 41 as far as it identified is as, you know, military equipment. But this is something that, you know, I sort of feel that we have to give the discretion to our police officers. We already have armored vehicles. We have a lot of other things. So, um, you know, personally, I can support this.
At this time, we're only tasked with changing the municipal code to add a section to adopt a military equipment use policy. We're not at this point adopting the actual policy or the what it would be included by our series police department. What is attached at the end of the agenda item is a draft of what they could potentially bring to us in the future. Just a reminder, at this point, we're only trying to adopt the ordinance and actually change the ordinance that we have adding Chapter 22. So with that being said, move to approve ordinance number 2022-1073.
Before we do that, just want to make sure that we have no more additional questions, then we will close public comment. I have an officially closed public comment.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Klein. Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Passes four zero.
Moving on to new business. Motion accepting the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one City of Series audited financial statements and audit report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we will have a presentation from our auditor Brett Jones from the audit firm J J A C P A uh, regarding our financial audit. I believe he is on Zoom.
Brett, I've unmuted your mic.
Yes, thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Letitia. As Letitia mentioned, my name is Brett Jones. I was the engagement manager on the audit this year, and I'd briefly just go over the, the report we issued uh, with the council. It is quite a large report to the tune of a hundred and fifty pages. So rather, if I just go through a, a brief overview of that report, starting with our auditor's opinion, which can be found on the first page, we issued an unmodified opinion. That is the highest opinion that we can give, so that's uh, really great. That's what you want to hear. And following uh, that auditor's report is the management's and discussion, management's discussion and analysis section on pages three to sixteen. The purpose of this section is to provide an analysis of the government's financial activities uh, in a narrative format. This section is prepared by management of the city and is a great place to, to go to and read to get just an overview of the financial activities of the city for the year. After the M D N A is the financial statements themselves. Uh, the thing unique to governmental accounting is that there's a dual basis of accounting. So the first set of financial statements are known as the government-wide financial statements, starting with the name, statement of net position on page nineteen and the statement of activities on page twenty. Uh, these statements are prepared using an economic resources measurement focus, which would be uh, the full accrual basis of accounting. You'll notice things like long-term, long-term assets and long-term debt on the section of the report. The next section of the report would be the fund financial statements, uh, starting with the balance sheet on page twenty-four and the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance on page twenty-eight. These statements are prepared with a current resources measurement focus, and they use a modified accrual basis of accounting, which would be more similar to cash uh, with shorter accrual periods typically around sixty days. Following the statements are the notes. This, uh, the notes are on pages forty-five to ninety-two. This section provides additional information about the financial disclosures of the city and really uh, has all the details of all the account balances uh, presented in financial statements. So that's just a brief overview of the audited financial statements. We have also issued our communications letter to the city council. This is a additional letter that we issued to the council that provides additional information regarding the audit. This letter would, includes management's responsibilities in the audit, our responsibilities, any uncorrected or corrective misstatements that we discovered would be in this, in this letter. And also, if there were any audit findings, they would be in this letter. And we're pleased to report that we don't have any audit findings. We didn't have anything that would be considered a significant deficiency or material weakness, which is, which is really great. We are issuing the report a little later than we typically like to. That was due to really two main factors. Uh, the first being the uh, COVID requirements. We did perform the audit one hundred percent remotely this year, which adds additional time as documents have to be scanned and emailed back and forth. And the city also implemented a new financial accounting system under this fiscal year, which also created some additional time in preparing the report. So with that, I'd be happy to answer uh, any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Brett. Any questions?
Do you have a question? Um, page eight of the report, government-wide financial analysis continued. The change in net position for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. What does that entail? Is that part of what the city's, where we are right now?
Yeah, so the change, the change in that position uh, is broken out between governmental activities and business-type activities would be sewer and water and that sort of thing. It kind of, it gives you um, what would, could be considered the net income of the city for the year. So that uh, is on page eight, and that's derived from the statement of activities on page twenty.
So that is, that is part of the city's financials?
Yes.
Okay. With that being said, again, I would like to have this item table till the next meeting so I can get with staff. Because, you know, when I went through and, and looked at the numbers and added them up, I come up with something completely different. So again, I'd like to get with staff to explain the difference. I mean, I come up with three million dollars in difference is what it is.
Council? Are you good with that? Good with that? Go ahead and table this item the next city council meeting. Motion.
Mayor, my recommendation is, since it's been noticed on the agenda, you should open for public comment if there is any. Then close, and then a motion to continue it.
Okay, we bring this back to the public. Is there any comments on this item? Seeing none? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring this back to council for a motion. Table this item.
I'll make a motion to table this item till the next city council meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero to table the item.
No discussion items. Any council member referrals?
Yes.
Uh, moving on uh, to reports. Or was there?
Okay.
Nothing. Okay, moving on to reports. I have no reports. Council, is there any reports?
Sure.
Casey has a report.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to participate in the Walk to Fight Suicide with patient a couple council meetings ago, and it was really uh, I don't know, it was not exciting, but it, it, it really brought back uh, thought of, of what our society doesn't do, maybe what it can do. Uh, it was reported that suicide is uh, the third leading cause of deaths in the United States. And this program, uh, the walk for, uh, to fight suicide out of the darkness, it's a, it's a method of raising funds, and it was uh, uh, well, it was worthwhile. I had, also was honored that my two granddaughters and my son's father-in-law also came in and they came away with uh, some eye-opening thoughts. At the same time, I was uh, surprised that one of the people recognized uh, does something within our own community, uh, the Center for Human Services uh, that's located on Grandview Drive, to be the head start, the Highway Patrol Building uh, on Herndon, uh, that we actually have a facility within our own city that uh, does its best to counsel people, provide help for the mentally challenged. Uh, so it was really a worthwhile experience for me as a person. And it also was uh, rewarding to be a citizen of Series on this council to know that within our own city, we do a lot to prevent that awful awful incident of someone close to you, your neighbor, you know, committing suicide. Also, while I was there, uh, there's going to be an event this thirtieth uh, in Modesto uh, at the cultural center on Santa Cruz Avenue, uh, so, celebrating uh, the, it's a cultural thing, celebrating the death of people. It's, it's the day before Halloween, and it's going to be at uh, it's on Santa Cruz there in Modesto, uh, from four, four P M. to seven thirty P M. And I recommend that those of you who've never attended something like this, it could probably be worthwhile. Thank you, Mayor.
And uh, what he's referring to is Dia de los Muertos event on the thirtieth. Councilmembers?
I have a couple of things. First of all, uh, Councilman Casey and I, at our own expense, attended uh, an event for an iconic business in our community, La Monita Restaurant, their fiftieth anniversary, and it was really fascinating to hear the story of La Monita and Lupe Cordova and everything that their family's gone through to be successful in one of our most successful and iconic businesses here in the series. So it was really fantastic to be there for that. And secondly, our Parks and Rec, uh, amazing things that they do every single week here in, in our city. This Saturday, the twenty-ninth, that at Whitmore Park is trunk or treat. If you were there last year, there had to be two, three thousand people there. It was fantastic. Music, food, just an amazing event. So that's from two to four this Saturday in Whitmore Park.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, city manager, any reports?
Uh, nothing this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody from the departments?
Uh, hi. Please join me in welcoming Tamara Spade as our new Economic Development Manager of the City of Series. She spent the last ten years as the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce in Ripon and Tracy. Prior to that, she worked for the State Senate District Twelve as a representative. In addition to her professional career, uh, Tamara served on the, served on the Board of Directors for the San Joaquin Workforce Development Board, Doctors Hospital of Manteca, Ripon, uh, Consolidated Fire District, and is currently serving on Valley First Christian, uh, Valley, Valley First Credit Union Board. Uh, she attended uh, Stan State, received a B A in communication and an F B A, and a second master's in leadership from Grand Canyon University. She holds a national certification in economic development from the University of Oklahoma, um, Ecl- uh, Economic Development Institute. And uh, she ha- also has certification in California. Uh, she's married to her husband, David Murphy, has three children and three grandchildren. So we're delighted to have her here, uh, take us, take our city to the next level of uh, economic development.
Welcome. Congratulations. Do you have anything to? Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor, uh, council members. Um, thank you, Councilmember Tavera, for giving us the update on for the twenty-ninth of this Saturday. Um, I wanted to extend that invitation to you guys uh, from two to four. Uh, we're looking to expand. Uh, last year, we were just on, on Third Street, but we're expanding from Third to North. So around the whole um, park this year. Um, so it's bigger and better this year. So I think we have close to forty booths, um, five food vendors, a lot of photo opportunities, so it's, I think we're up like maybe twelve vendors from last year, so we're really excited about that event. And secondly, um, just to want, uh, mark your guys' counters. I believe you received this already. November eighth is our um, active military banner programs ceremony. Um, so that's going to be at nine o'clock, and it will be on the corner of Fourth um, and North Street. And here, I'll just kind of show you kind of the sample, well, what it's going to look like for our banners when we start hanging them on the eighth.
Could you uh, place a sign right where the microphone is back there so we can get it off Zoom so everybody can see at home? So there's, just real quick, we have a total of thirty-one banners that will be starting to hang on the, on the eighth. Should have them all installed by the tenth of, of November. They'll be placed up for one year. Thank you very much, Joe. It's exciting. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, Councilman, I also would like to make an announcement. I think uh, Joseph Chavez uh, does not get enough recognition for all the time he puts in. I'm, I totally respect this guy for just uh, character and uh, dedication to, to helping not only uh, my engineering department with the Ochoa uh, uh, public uh, outreach, but with all these things that he does, I think he's really great. I just so wanted to also thank the public for taking caution on the Morgan Road Improvement uh, project. And they're driving safely. We're not having any close calls. We're tearing up the intersection uh, and installing medians right now, so I still would like everybody to pay close attention, especially at night when they drive on Morgan Road. And uh, we have the A T P survey still going on until the twenty-ninth for the pedestrian bicycling and pathway to the park. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Do we have the county supervisor online? Doesn't look like we do. Okay. With that being said, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a wonderful night.